Thank you so much. Thank you. First of all, we would like to thank those who came here early, way early, and they've been here since, I think, 5 o'clock. Some, they've been here since half past 4. So, thank you so much, guys. We are about to start our great meetings. We're not gonna wait for those who are still on their ways. When they come, they're just gonna join us wherever we'll be. But for us to all know those who came on time, let us start without much protocols. Without any further delay, can I please invite you wherever you are? Just stand up on your feet. I'd like us to start our meeting with prayer. As we did not gather in this place just as young people, but we've gathered in this place as young Christians. And without the presence of God, this meeting is pointless. So, I'd like you wherever you are, just raise up your voice. Even those who are watching online, from the United States, from Congo, wherever you are, I just want you to take this 15 minutes to pray, God, that everything that you're going to say, whatever that's gonna be done in this place, let it be done for the glory of God and someone to leave this place with a one plus, so that you're not gonna lose or waste your two hours that you're going to spend with us in this place. Can you just raise up your voice wherever you are? Start clapping your hands and pray, God, and pray, God, in Jesus' mighty name. Hallelujah. I want you to start clapping your hands and pray in Jesus' mighty name. Can you clap your hands and pray, beloveds? Clap your hands and pray. When you're clapping your hands, then you are motivating yourself as well. I don't know how you pray, but when you're clapping your hand, it is a way of motivating yourself. You're gonna pray, God, and say to God, "We want you to be Alpha Omega." Every single moment that you're going to spend, let your presence be this. We silence the voice of the devil and the voice of whatever which is not honoring and the away confessing your lordship in this place, in the mighty name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus. Yes, you are praying well. I want you to confess, you are praying and confessing the freedom of the Spirit to rule over this place, in the mighty name of Jesus. Hallelujah. In the mighty name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus. Hallelujah. Father, I pray and I declare the freedom of the Spirit. I pray that the Spirit of God may take the first place in Jesus' mighty name. Let your Spirit, Father God, lead us in time of worship, time of prayers, Yahweh, the time that your servants will stand in this place, Yahweh, to speak to the youth. I pray that the freedom of the Spirit to be given unto us. And I silence every voice which is not from you. And I declare, Father God, nothing else but the Spirit of God to rule over this place, in Jesus' mighty name, our Lord and Savior. We pray, and let all the saints say, "Amen." Ah, come on, come on, come on. Let somebody say, "Amen." Can you just walk around? I want you to greet your neighbor, ask the name of the person, and, you know, there are many faces here that I don't know. So, myself as well, I'm gonna go and ask names, please. Just do me a favor, walk around, ask someone's name. Greet your neighbor, ask the name. How are you, my brother? My name is Michael. My brother, my name is Michael. What's your name? Moses. Oh, thank you. My name is Michael.
Fabrice.
Oh, Fabrice. Nice to meet you. My sister, my name is Michael.
I'm Whitney. Nice to meet you.
What's your name? Oh, nice, Whitney. Come on, come on. I don't wanna see anyone sitting. Are you a gogo? Walk, go ask people, please, please. Break their eyes, go ask some names. Maybe your next wife is here. My brother, how are you? I'm happy to see you. I'm so happy to see you, sir. Nice to see you. Thank you so much. My brother, my name is Michael. Feel free, please. Oh, my brother, I'm so happy to see you. Michael, what's your name, brother? Oh, Stefan. Nice one. Oh, thank you. Please, if you did not greet, do not sit. Especially those who did not get married as yet, don't sit, hey! Especially those who did not get married as yet. Go find that day. We never know. Don't be too kilo, hey! People from this side, did you greet everybody? Are you sure? That side, did you greet them? Ah, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Wow, 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 wow. What a wonderful moment. Can I hear you celebrate again, Jesus Christ, wherever you are? Hallelujah. Amen. 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 Praise the living God.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
I just wanna take you to a little moment of prayer before we begin everything. Hallelujah. I just wanna ask you, can you just please stand up upon your feet once again? And... I just wanna let you know that the moment that we are spending here is not a moment of just fun, but I believe it's a moment of transformation. Hallelujah. The Bible says that David is saying that, "I was glad when they said unto me, 'Let us go in the house of God.'" Hallelujah. This is where you found transformation. Hallelujah. It's not about your age, it's not about your nation, or the color of your skin. Hallelujah. God can use anybody that He wants. Hallelujah. When you are here, believe that there is a mission upon your life, that God wants to use you. Hallelujah. For this generation, God wants to use you. So, I want you to begin to pray wherever you are, and ask the Holy Spirit that, "May He not pass you by this moment." May the Holy Spirit never pass you by in this moment. May He fill you up. Every emptiness that you came with it in this place, may it be filled up, in the mighty name of Jesus. Can you open up your voice and begin to worship Him wherever you are? Open up your voice and worship Him. If you know the song, you can sing it with all your heart. Hallelujah. And you so great. You are the mighty warrior. And you so great. Jehovah. Jehovah is your name. Oh, you are the mighty warrior. And you so great. Is your name. Come on, sing it. Mighty warrior. And you so great. Jehovah. Is your name. Oh, you are the mighty warrior. You won my battle. You won my battle. You fight for me. Oh, you are the mighty warrior. And you so great. Jehovah. Come on, lift your voice and begin to worship Him. Lift your voice and begin to worship Him. Lift your hand and we get to worship Him. I am inviting you to the living water. I am inviting you to the living water. Where there is no limitation, where there is no limitation, where there is no limitation, where there is no condemnation. The Bible declare, those who are in Christ, there is no condemnation for us. Lift up your voice and worship Him. 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 Hey, 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 hey! Did not miss this moment? Did not miss this moment? Oh, 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 young men, young women, you did not come here to joke. You did not come here to look at your friend. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. I am just bringing you closer. I am just bringing you closer. I am bringing you closer, closer. Can I hear a young man, a young woman lifting their voice and worshiping? Can I hear your voice wherever you are? Do not be ashamed of your friend. Do not be ashamed of your sin, that you came with it this time. This is a moment, this is a moment of encounter. This is a moment of transformation. This is a moment where God is molding, God is shaping, God is transforming your life. Ah, lift up your voice, lift up your voice. Can you just sing it? Mighty warrior. And you so... Jehovah. Is your name. Can I hear your voice louder? Mighty warrior. And you so great. Jehovah. Is your name. You are the mighty warrior. You are a mighty warrior. Can somebody celebrate their name, Jesus? I can't hear you. I am not asking you to celebrate the name of your family member. I am not asking you to celebrate your neighbor. But I am asking you to celebrate the name of your God. Can a young person and a young woman shake this place with your praise? Can I hear you shout your praise? Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Wow. Amen. Amen. Hallelujah. Are you ready for this atmosphere? Ask your neighbor, are you ready for this atmosphere? Ask your neighbor again, are you ready for this atmosphere? To the left, to the right, ask your neighbor, are you ready for this atmosphere? Tell your neighbor, "I am not going out the same." I am going out transformed. I am going out with the living water. Hallelujah. If you came out, you came in this place empty. I believe that God will fill you up. Hallelujah. Every problem that you came with it, believe that you shall be transformed in this place. Hallelujah. Can you give God a praise wherever you are? Hallelujah. Prepare your dancing shoes wherever you are. Hallelujah. Let us praise the living God. That's when you clap for yourself. Can you clap for Jesus now? Can you do it as loud as you can? I'm gonna say it one more time. Can you clap for the King of Kings wherever you are? It is... It is... It is true that we are, we are all, some of us are born here, we all grew up in English, but somehow, we still have some blood, Congolese blood flowing within ourselves. Amen. So, us as Congolese, we have a way of us celebrating. Can you praise God? Can somebody shout for Jesus? Do I have young people this side? Can you celebrate Jesus? We're gonna do a song which is very, very common to everybody, and I would like the participation of everybody in this venue. Can we do that? Amen. Can we do that? It's very simple. Can you sing with me? "He's gonna fulfill..." Let me sing with the crowd first. Let me sing with the congregation for a moment. Don't give up. Can you do it one more time, one more time? Everybody, God is able. "He's gonna fulfill..." Sing it. "You doing it right." "Every promise, don't you give up on God." "'Cause He won't." You say... Can you clap your hands, clap your hands, clap your hands for Jesus? Somebody shout, "Is able." Everybody, come on. God is able. "Just what He said." "He's gonna fulfill." "Every promise." "Don't you give up on God." Say, "Is able." Clap your hands, clap your hands, clap your hands for Jesus. Yeah. Say, "Is able." Clap your hands, clap your hands, clap your hands. Do it one more time, one more time. Yeah. God is able. "He's gonna fulfill." "Every promise." "Don't give up on God." Say, "Is able." Clap your hands, clap your hands, clap your hands for Jesus. Say, "Is able." I would like everybody to sing from there, loud as they can. "Is able," everybody. One more time around, we doing it. Sing. "Is able," have me sing. One more time, sing. "Is able," have me sing. Sing it again, one more time. "Is able," have me sing. Now, I would like you to sing. Sing, "Is able." "Whatever He says." "He's gonna do it." "Whatever He promises." "He's gonna do it." Say, "Is able." "Whatever He says." "He's gonna do it." Say, "Yeah." "Is able." Somebody celebrate Jesus. Somebody shout for Jesus. Hey, everybody, yeah. "Don't give up on..." "'Cause He won't give up on you." Can you sing it together with me? Don't you give up now. Can a young man give a round of applause for the King of Kings one more time? One more time. Can I have some young people in front with me here? Let us celebrate. This is our day. We do not have another day like this one. Can you just come in front here? Let crowd this place. If you do not come in front, I'm gonna come myself and pick you. Can I come down? I'm gonna come and pick you. "Nalingiyo, nalingiyo, nalingiyo, kolo yesuwe." "Nalingiyo, si shai, nalingiyo, kolo yesuwe." "Ah, talanengeyokomi i."
Ee, yeso yo, talan deke yokomi siga.
Talan deke yokomi sanga eh. Ah, kasila nelo koloya, ah, ah, seh sa, i. Yo, mina kawapi, yo, mina kawapi, yo, ah, 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 ah. Oh, talan deke yokomi sanga eh. Kasita ladege yokomi sanga eh. Oh, chakuwa, 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 leo. Kasiyaya, mina ladege na yo, ah, 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 seh sa, danse.
Si.
Kasiyaya, mina ladege na yo, i, i, ah, ah.
Si.
Ah, 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 ah. Wapi mololo, yaya, mina ladege na yo, ah, ah.
Si.
Ah, 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 ah. Ayi, chakuwa, 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 leo.
Ni, ni na chakuwa masiya.
Oe, oe, Baba.
Chakuwa.
Mama.
Chakuwa.
Ah, leo.
Ni, ni na chakuwa masiya.
Oe, oe, Baba.
Chakuwa.
Oe, tomama.
Chakuwa.
Ayi.
Ni, ni na chakuwa masiya.
Chakuwa leo. Bouche, eh, bepa, bepa, bepa.
Bepa!
Bepa bouche, bepa.
Bepa!
Balancez, balancez, balancez. Balancez, balancez, balancez. Eh, bepa, bepa, bepa.
Bepa!
Bepa, bepa, bepa.
Bepa!
Bepa bouche, bepa.
Bepa!
Bepa, ah, négétozo mina bo, eskeza mabe.
Esamabe, yeah.
Ah, négétozo, brrr, esamabe.
Esamabe.
Wana zambe, minela yesu. Si. Ah, ah, eh, danse, bougez, eh, bougez, allez, i, ne, bilela yesu. Ah, yana na yo, seh sa.
Si.
Ayi, ya jesi, ya jesi. Ayaya, ayaya, ah, ah, tobelela ya jesi, ya jesi, ayayakosala, tobelela ya jesi eh. Ayi, ya se si eh, ya se si eh.
Yéna zarete.
Ya se si eh, ya se si eh.
Yéna zarete.
Ya se si eh, ya se si eh.
Yéna zarete.
Mololo, se kawa yo, se kawa yo.
Yéna zarete.
Ya se si eh, ya se si eh.
Yéna zarete.
Ah, yesu eh, yesu.
Yesu.
Yesu eh, yeah.
Yesu.
Yesu eh, nikamotema.
Yesu.
Yesu papa abana.
Si.
Yesu eh, yesu. Yesu eh, yesu. Yesu papa nabana. Yesu nikamotema, eh, danse. Bouche les hommes qui poussent des cris de soi, vous êtes si. Quel bon anzame, ah!
Quel bon anzame qui t'es.
I, i, i. Non mais trop vite. Attelevini kololo. Eh, wo, pas si la nalo kololo, ah, ah, yaya droite. Doksa, doksa, i, doksa, doksa. Allez, ah, doksa, ah, doksa, ayaya, 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 zola, 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 zola. Kasibina ladege na yo, ah, ah. Quel bon anzame, ah, ah.
Quel bon anzame qui t'es.
Non mais trop vite. Est-ce que bolé mi? Est-ce que tolé mi? Est-ce que tolé mi? Oh, baluka maman abika moi eh. Eh, baluka maman alobo konsame. Eh, baluka maman abika moi eh. Ah, talaloka dera komiba eh. Ah, doksa, 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 presse ma, eh.
Doksa.
Doksa, 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 presse ma. Baluka maman abazoa.
Doksa.
Oh, i, ma frère, ma série, eh, minga, ah. Ah, quel beau, quel beau.
Quel beau!
Quel beau, eh, quel beau.
Quel beau!
Ni le beau qui t'a, eh.
Quel beau!
Quel beau qui t'a, eh.
Quel beau!
Quel beau, quel beau.
Quel beau!
Quel beau, quel beau.
Quel beau!
Quel beau, quel beau.
Quel beau!
Quel beau, eh, quel. Eh, ni le beau qui t'a, eh.
Quel beau!
Quel beau qui t'a, eh.
Quel beau!
Doksa, doksa.
Doksa!
Kasibina na yo, ah. Ah, quel beau, quel beau.
Quel beau!
Est-ce que quelqu'un peut pousser des cris de? Can you celebrate the name of Jesus? Alleluia! Alleluia!
Amen.
Alleluia!
Amen.
Listen to me. I just wanna give you some seconds to celebrate Jesus, without the music, without any music, alleluia. I think in the time of Apostle Paul, they never had all the guitar and, you know, cymbals and everything. I just want you to use your hand, alleluia. You are celebrating the King of Kings. Can you just clap your hand wherever you are and celebrate Jesus? Yes, yes, any, any young man in this place, celebrate Jesus! Celebrate Jesus! Oh, 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 oh! Where are you, where are you? Where are you? Where are you, where are you? Celebrate the name of Jesus! Where are you celebrating? Ayaya, 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 ayaya. Celebrate him! Celebrate him! Ah, ayaya, 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 ayaya. Alleluia! It looks like there are no young people in this place. It looks like some of you are so diplomatic, you know? You are very old. Who's above fifty here? Who's above fifty? If you are not above fifty, I want you to jump wherever you are. Go crazy in this place, for the life that God has given you. It's a miracle! For the life that God has given you! Oh, jump wherever you are! Jump wherever you are! Jump wherever you are! Jump wherever you are! Oh, 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 oh! Lift something on high! Lift something on high! Lift something on high! Oh, 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 oh! Oh, 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 oh! Lift something on high! Hey! Alleluia! Alleluia! This is how young people celebrate God. Can we welcome the presence of our Father in this place? Alleluia! Wow, 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 wow. Praise God, thank you. Thank you so much, I just want you, wherever you are, you're gonna close your eyes and raise up your hands. Now it is the moment, the reason why we came in this place, to hear from God through his servants, coming all the way from Congo, with a special message for us. And I don't want you to mess up this moment. Even those who are watching online, I want you to, right now, to stop whatever you've been doing. And I want you to really focus and give the best of yourself. Raise up your hands wherever you are, and turn your eyes onto the Lord. I want you to say to God, for the next one hour, I'm available and ready to hear from you. The word that your servant has brought from Congo, a special message for this generation. I wanna be a candidate that gonna receive it. And not only a soil to receive the seed, but to produce as well the fruit. Can you just raise up your voice wherever you are? And start praying to the name of Jesus. Raise up your voice and pray. I can see someone smiling, I don't know why you're smiling. This is not the moment for you to be distracted. Go deep in God's presence. Even those who are watching online, I want you to pray, God. You are silencing every voice which is not from God. Oh, this is the moment for you and God. This is the moment for you to listen from God. This is the moment for you to hear from God. Alleluia! You have won the victory. You have won hero for us. Death could not hold you down. You are the reason king. Seated in majesty. You are the reason king. Oh, alleluia. You have won the victory.
You have won the victory.
Oh, alleluia.
Alleluia.
Eh, parade sakataya. You have won hero. Arade basada labaka.
Hero for.
Said, death could not hold you.
Death could not hold you down.
Oh, you are the reason king.
You are the reason king.
Yeah, seated in majesty.
Seated in majesty.
Oh, you are the reason king.
You are the reason king.
Oh, death could not hold you.
Death could not hold you down.
Oh, you are the reason king.
You are the reason king.
Yeah, seated in majesty.
Seated in majesty.
Oh, you are the reason king.
You are the reason king.
Yeshua. Ah, eh! Ah, eh! Eh, Yeshua eh. My beloved. Je verrais que là où le son nous puissait élever nos mains et l'adorer, libérer quelques paroles d'adoration. Adore le, adore le. Adorent le roi. Le roi de toute génération. Le dieu de nos pères Abraham, Isaac et Japhet. Et aujourd'hui, il est en dieu. Perdons des rémercions. Tu ne vas jamais nous abandonner. Tu vas jamais nous laisser. Ta gloire va nous accompagner dans chaque étape de cette génération. On va s'élever comme David. On va s'élever comme Josué. On va s'élever comme Calére. Nous croyons dans le dieu, dans le nom de Jésus Christ. Que tous les saints disent, amen, amen, amen. Vous pouvez faire de bruit? Hey! Vous pouvez faire de bruit?
Elia de. Ela savara de keyaba.
Vous pouvez vous rassoir, merci? Je peux voir la présence de pasteur aussi? Est-ce qu'on peut acclamer pour le pasteur? Gloire à Dieu. Est-ce qu'il y a un pasteur ici que j'ai peut-être manqué de mentionner? Nous voulons vous honorer, vous pouvez juste vous tenir debout, on va vous honorer. Amen. Gloire à Dieu. Bienvenue à la maison du docteur. Amen. On va essayer de partager certains éléments cruciaux. Information cruciale. Et j'ai beaucoup à partager avec vous. Ceci n'est pas une prédication. Je vais faire un exposé. Et je vais ramener cela dans le ligne biblique. Et je vais finir par attirer avec certaines recommandations. Vous êtes tellement spécial. Vous êtes l'un des générations spéciales. Mais ya, est-ce que ça va avec la position de pasteur? Vous savez? C'est une recommandation de la part du Seigneur. Dieu m'a donné le mandat de parler aux jeunes. À ce qu'il m'a dit. Nous devrions préparer un armée. À ce qu'il y a une bataille au devant de nous. Alors pour cela, nous devrions préparer l'armée pour l'Eternel. Bien aimé? Certaines des informations que je veux partager avec vous.
Certaines des informations que je veux partager avec vous. Mon objectif n'est pas vous rendre avoir la peur. Mais comme Père, je dois vous parler. Il y avait le moment où Jésus a dit aux disciples, les temps seront difficiles. Mais n'ayez pas peur. Parce que j'ai conquis le monde. Et dans chaque aspect, on va partager. Je m'arrête que vous puissiez avoir peur. Parce que la plupart des informations que je vais partager avec vous ce soir n'est pas positive. Mais nous avons une manière, un chemin. Avec Dieu, on a une manière de réussir, amen. La raison ce n'est pas de vous rendre, de vous donner la peur. Mais le but, c'est de vous préparer. Savez la bénédiction de Joseph? Devant de Pharaon? Était exactement votre génération. Dieu a montré à Pharaon le rêve. Sept ans d'abondance. Et sept ans de famine. Et cela sera difficile. Mais avec l'interprétation de Joseph, il a fait en sorte que l'Égypte a échappé. N'était réellement pas possible d'être évité. Pourquoi? Parce que Joseph a parlé à Pharaon. Comment est-ce qu'il devrait se préparer lui-même? Concernant ce qui a déjà été établi. Il y a pas d'intercession. Pouvez changer ce que Pharaon avait rêvé. L'interprétation de Joseph a fait en sorte que l'Égypte a échappé. Et ceci est le but de tout ce que je vais partager avec vous. J'ai dit à ma femme la prophète. Oui, je vais parler à l'église. Mais mon fardeau c'est ce qui est en train d'arriver maintenant. De communiquer mais avec la jeunesse. On va parler aujourd'hui sur la jeunesse avec la montée de l'intelligence artificielle. Vous serez choqués. Ceci sont des situations qui ont déjà été prises. Ceci n'arrive pas parce que la science se développe rapidement. Et pour moi d'être capable d'atteindre la raison pour laquelle je veux atteindre dans cet exposé. Je vais d'abord vous ramener d'abord dans la Bible. Pourquoi? Jésus a dit, ce qui était arrivé à l'époque de Noé va réellement se répéter. Avant la rentrée du Messie. Quand la Bible dit cela, ceci n'est pas l'opinion de l'apôtre. Ceci était une parole directe des gestes. Au moins nous devrions étudier ce qui est arrivé à l'époque de Noé. Alors on sera capable de savoir comment est-ce qu'on peut aussi échapper. Je vais commencer par les écritures. Certains des références, si vous vous donnez. Tout ce que je veux exposer je m'arrête que vous puissiez le prendre au sérieux. Et de commencer à considérer chaque point. Avoir comment vous positionnez vous-même. Père au nom de Jésus. Papa, tu m'as dit, que ma génération, qui va se tenir pour le dernier combat avant mon retour. Anoint mes mots et ouvre les yeux. Et je sais que je suis en train de parler au grand. Et le capitaine de différentes industries. Ma prière, laisse ce moment être une bénédiction. En nom de Jésus, je prie. Amen. Amen. Beloved, commençons par le livre de Genèse, chapitre 1. Du verset 1 à 8. La Bible dit comme ceci. Quand les hommes ont commencé sur la surface de la terre, leurs filles sont nées. Les fils six. Du verset 1 jusqu'à 8. Genèse 6, chapitre 6, du verset 1. Le fils de Dieu a vu que les filles étaient attrayantes. D'autres versions disent qu'elles étaient belles. Et ils ont pris les filles qu'ils choisissaient. Puis le Seigneur a dit, mon esprit ne restera pas dans l'homme pour toujours. Car il est que ses jours seront de 120 ans. Les néphilins étaient sur la terre ces jours-là. D'autres versions disent les géants. Et après cela, quand les fils de Dieu sont venus sur les filles, ils leur donnaient des enfants. Ils étaient des hommes puissants. Qui étaient vieux. Des hommes reconnus. Le Seigneur a vu que la méchanceté de l'homme était grande sur la terre. Et que toute pensée de leur cœur était seulement mauvaise. Le Seigneur a regrettable qu'il avait fait l'homme sur la terre. Et il a souffert de sa peur. Donc le Seigneur a dit, je vais planifier l'homme qui ai été créé sur la surface de la terre. Hommes et animaux. Et des insectes et des oiseaux du ciel. Parce que je suis désolé que j'ai fait ces choses. Et le dernier passage dit, mais Noé a trouvé grâce dans les yeux du Seigneur. Amen. Beloved, c'est ce qui est arrivé à l'époque de Noé. Je ne vais vraiment pas me permettre de prêcher. Sinon ça va me prendre longtemps. Mais c'est ce qui est arrivé. Et ce que nous devrions comprendre quand nous parlons de l'histoire de l'intelligence artificielle. Cette histoire est connectée avec l'histoire de ceux que nous appelons les néphilins. Les géants. Ce qui est arrivé à l'époque de Noé, la Bible décrit que nous avons entendu ce que nous appelons les anges déchus. Les hommes ont multiplié sur la planète. Ce sont les descriptions. Plus de gens sur la planète. Deuxièmement, belles filles sur la planète. Très attrayantes. C'est ce que la Bible nous dit. Et ce qui est arrivé, maintenant les anges ont vu que les filles étaient tellement belles. Elles sont descendues sur la terre. Elles ont choisi certaines filles. Elles les ont grossées. Et elles ont donné naissance à une nouvelle race. Cette nouvelle race que certains versions appellent les néphilins. Généralement elles sont appelées les géants. Et elles étaient tellement célèbres. Et ils ont commencé parce que c'était la mixture de l'intelligence des hommes et des anges déchus. Les hommes et les anges déchus ont donné naissance à une race qui était tellement intelligente. Mais tout ce qui avait trait à l'intelligence a rendu la planète une place méchante. Une place corrompue. La Bible dit la méchanceté. La violence. Le cœur des hommes est tellement mauvais. Mais dans la même génération, la Bible dit, Noé a trouvé grâce. C'est pourquoi je vous ai dit, la plupart des choses que nous allons partager, n'ayez pas peur. Parce qu'ils seront les gens qui trouveront grâce. Et j'espère et je souhaite et je prie que vous soyez parmi ces gens-là. Amen. Donc vous soyez parmi eux. Et c'est pourquoi Dieu permet ces moments. Pour que je puisse partager avec vous ce show. Pour que vous soyez sur le camp de ceux qui trouveront grâce. Et ces choses ne se produisent pas à l'époque de Noé. Et les conséquences, le jugement de Dieu est arrivé. Dieu a permis que les terriques mais quelque chose est arrivé. Pendant le jugement, Dieu a instructé Noé à bâtir l'arche. Et quand le jugement traversait le flage était en train de monter, l'arche était en train de monter. Et c'est l'image de l'enlèvement. Je fermerai mon mieux de ne pas aller encore près de cela. Parce que je veux rester dans l'intelligence artificielle. C'est exactement l'image de l'enlèvement. C'est pourquoi les choses se produisent. Et vous pouvez entendre les prédicateurs dire, Jésus est revenu. Et l'église va partir. Et c'est exactement ce qui arrive. À l'époque de Moïse, nous lisons dans la Bible aussi l'apparition des géants. Quand Moïse a envoyé les douze espions pour aller vérifier la terre promise, dans leurs propres rapports ils disent, nous avons trouvé dans cette terre de canne les néphilins. Les géants. C'est pourquoi ils étaient effrayés. La majorité était震驚. Mais Joshua et Caleb dans la minorité dépendent de la grâce. Les mêmes choses que Joshua et Caleb disent Noé ont trouvé grâce. Les mêmes choses que Joshua et Caleb disent. Si le Seigneur nous fera grâce, nous serons les vainqueurs. Et j'espère aussi dans tout ce que nous allons partager aujourd'hui, vous vous trouverez sur le côté de Joshua et Caleb. Amen. Et ce n'était pas tout, beloved. Avec Joshua et Caleb, vous pouvez le trouver dans le livre des nombres. Chapitre 13. Chapitre 13. Et versets 32 et 33. Où vous allez trouver cette histoire? Et aussi dans le temps de Philistins. Ça veut dire que je veux vous montrer ce qui se produit maintenant. Comme l'homme sage Solomon dit, il n'y a rien de nouveau. Les choses changent seulement dans le contexte. Ce qui se produit aujourd'hui est ce qui est déjà arrivé. C'est pourquoi je vous ai dit à l'époque de Noé et à l'époque de Moïse. Et à l'époque de Philistins, Israël était choqué quand nous avons parlé de Goliath. Goliath était l'un de ces géants. Avec six doigts et six pieds. Et avec le taille de l'homme. Et pendant 40 ans, Israël était terrorisé. Mais nous avons vu en ce temps-là la montée d'un jeune homme appelé David. who rose
et s'est levé
and stop
et a arrêté
the giants
les géants
and I also wish
et je suis en train de dire
just like on the time of the Philistine
comme à l'époque de David
you will be on the side of David
vous serrez dans le côté de David
amen
amen
you be on the side of David
vous serrez du camp de David
and here we are on the twenty-first century
on nous sommes pendant le vingtième siècle maintenant
beloved I want to say to you
je m'aimerais vous dire bien aimé
is no longer is no longer a fiction
ceci ne plus une fiction
we share the planet with the people we call the X-Files
nous sommes en train de partager la planète avec des gens qui ne sont pas de notre planète
is no longer a fiction
ceci ne plus une fiction
it was a fiction maybe when we were young
c'était une fiction quand on était encore petits
but in your generation
votre génération
you need to know
devriez savoir
that we already sharing the planet
nous sommes déjà en train de partager la planète
on partage déjà la planète avec les gens que nous appelons les extra we are sharing our planet with those we call aliens et vous voyez déjà des faits où ils on voit leur apparition dans différents endroits
where they appearing and doing many stuff
and I was even reading one of the leader
j'ai donc en train de lire
the congressman of America is saying
sénateur américain
we need to get used
on doit commencer à s'habituer
because we need them
parce qu'on a besoin de
we don't need them
on n'a pas besoin de
but they've got an agenda
mais ils ont un agenda
and that agenda
et cet agenda
this is what we going to discuss
et c'est ce qu'on va aujourd'hui partager avec vous
and X-Files are not the the beings coming from other planets no
les extraterrestres ne sont pas à de ce soir en train de revenir sur la planète
this is how they want to show it to us
c'est comme ça qu'on veut nous dépéter
just like happened in the time of Noah
comme c'est arrivé à l'époque de Noé
the fallen angels
les anges déchus
they came down on earth
ont venu sur la terre
with a purpose
avec une raison
and they are mixing
ils sont en train de s'émixer
with a human daughters
avec les femmes humaines
and they already gave birth
et ils sont en train de mettre naissance
they already give birth
ils sont déjà en train de mettre au monde
they already give birth
ils sont déjà en train de mettre
to another race of humans
les humains
I'm talking to a generation
je suis en train de parler à une génération
where you know
vous savez
even one of the I will not I will not name
je vais pas mentionner son nom
one of the star
l'âme de star
have got a child
il a un enfant
who never came
qui n'est pas venu
out of a mother's womb
qui n'est pas sorti du ventre d'une mère
you can go check
pouvez aller vérifier
and that child
et cet enfant
who never knows the mother's womb
qui n'a jamais connu le ventre de la mère
is living with us
et est en train de vivre avec nous
and he was presented on the window of the world
et il a été présenté dans le fenêtre de ce monde
and every time this man was singing
et à chaque moment qu'il l'homme était en train de chanter
people was collapsing
les gens étaient en train de tomber pendant qu'ils chantaient
everywhere
partout
this is no longer a fiction
ceci ne plus une fiction
this is no longer what people are thinking or opinion
ceci ne plus les opinions bien ce que le gens sont en train de penser
and most of them
la plupart de
just like in the time of Noah
comme à l'époque de Noé
the Bible say
la Bible dit
they were they well renowned
c'était des hommes qui étaient connus de stars
same
c'était des stars
is the targets
être star c'est ça en fait l'objectif
well known
être connu
is the focus
c'est ça en fait leur focus
why because they know
parce qu'ils savent
once I'm well known
le moment que je suis connu révélé
I will influence millions of people
je vais influencer les millions de gens
to hell
aller en enfer
and one of another elements
et là des éléments
besides the X-Files are no longer fiction
à côté que les extraterrestres ne sont plus une fiction
the Bible said the wickedness
c'est là que la méchanceté
listen
écoutez
man is not perfect
l'homme l'humain n'est pas parfait
man can do evil
l'homme peut faire du mal
but when they say wickedness
quand ils parlent de la méchanceté
is the evil
c'est quand le mal
above
au-delà
the imagination of a human
imagination de l'humain
and this is no longer a fact
et ceci ne plus de fait
we watching on TV
vous regardiez à la télé
they can show you
on peut vous montrer
a boyfriend
un monsieur
who cut in pieces a girlfriend
un copain qui a vraiment coupé en morceaux
there is nothing of human
il y a rien de l'humain
in doing so
en faisant de choses comme cela
nothing
rien
man can be evil
l'homme peut être mauvais
but man cannot reach that level
l'homme ne peut pas arriver à ce niveau-là
wickedness
la méchanceté
when you open your TV
vous ouvrez la télé
when you check your social media
quand vous allez sur le réseau social
sometime you ask the question
des fois vous posez la question
what is in the mind of the person doing such things
la pensée de la personne qui fait de choses comme cela
wickedness
la méchanceté
it's become normal
c'est venu norme maintenant
why
pourquoi
because we already sharing the planet
parce que nous partageons déjà la planète
with another race
avec une autre race
just between the brackets
juste entre parenthèses jeune
make sure
rassurez-vous
that you marry a human
que vous mariez un humain
make sure
rassurez-vous
that you marry
vous mariez
a human I don't say girl, I don't say boy, I say
un garçon ou une fille
a human
mais je dis un humain
it's become normal today
ça devient une norme aujourd'hui
normal
ça devient une norme aujourd'hui
I will not mention some of the things because
je vais pas mentionner certaines choses parce que
I know the risk I'm taking and sharing with you all this stuff
je reconnais le risque que je suis en train de prendre en disant en partageant des choses comme cela
and I know that I'm covered with a mandate
je sais que je suis couvert avec un mandat
amen make sure
rassurez-vous
wickedness
la méchanceté
violence
la violence
and all other type of stuff
et d'autres types de histoires
in the generation that we think that we are highly technological
dans une génération où nous pensons que nous sommes hautement technologiques
but we are a very sick generation
ah nous sommes une génération
that the earth never experience
il y a une génération les plus malades que aucune génération ait expérimenté
and we gonna discover
on va découvrir
the roots of all this stuff
la racine de toutes ces choses
and this is the twenty-first century
nous sommes pendant le vingtième siècle
we can we have got already some of the great leader
on a certains de grands leaders
on this planet
sur cette planète
which are not human
qui ne sont pas des humains
and I know
et je sais
that I'm sewing a seed
je suis en train de planter une semence
that will open your eyes
qui va ouvrir vos yeux
maybe from now
maintenant
you will start every time you watch news
et commencer maintenant
you read books because your eyes are open
parce que vos yeux sont maintenant ouverts
you will know even more than what I'm exposing to you
connaître même plus que ce que je suis en train de vous dire
I believe that je crois ça because you are a special generation
vous êtes une génération spéciale amen
la méchanceté
the wickedness
c'est ce qui avait caractérisé tout le temps
and that really what characterized
Noah
the time of Noah
Moses
Moses time
David
David
and the twenty-first century
et c'est arrivé au vingtième siècle
and now is even the worst
c'est encore même pire
you know
vous savez
even more
même plus
example more than me, you know more
je crois que vous connaissez
that things are happening everywhere is no longer a secret
parce que tout c'est plus un secret
even the governments is not able to control
le gouvernement soit n'est pas capable de contrôler
biggest metro
une grande ville
cities
grande cité
highest technology
la technologie élevée
but wickedness
méchanceté
and day after days
jour après jour
even the rules that are coming out of our leaders
même certains de lois qui sont en train de sortir de nos leaders
you can watch and say
vous regardez vous dire
are really this human
est-ce qu'ils sont des humains
in the country
dans un pays
where the level of HIV so high
où le niveau du SIDA est tellement élevé
but leaders are reducing the right of sexualities
mais le leader sont en train de réduire le droit à la sexualité
that a child from thirteen
une fille, un garçon
is free
est libre
and all this are just going in one direction
et tout ce show de sont en train de partir sur une même direction
wickedness
la méchanceté
and you gonna understand why the reason of that wickedness
comprendre le pourquoi de cette méchanceté
as I say, don't be afraid
comme je dis n'ayez pas peur
in our in our twenty-first century
notre temps et aujourd'hui
we living, we sharing the planet already And they overwhelmed one industry. Like in the time of Philistine and others, he's a tech on Santray down the domain de l'invention. They are the first who started to build the weapons of war. Since the old age, every time they appear. Why the purpose? They are with us, but they are not of us. Their targets is to destroy the humans on the planet. To reduce humans on the level of animal. I say to myself, Benjamin, do yourself not to preach? Just stay in the expose. Because God created man on his image and his likeness. And the devil envy that position. Because what's making devil is? He was saying, I will build my throne on the mountain of the most higher God. And I will become like God. That the dream of the devil. And God say, I will make man, he will be like me. Now the devil, I want to be like God. And God take these dusts and want to make him like him. Humans are the enemy of the dreams of the devil. That is why every time they are on the planets, they capture. One domain. L'invention. That is why we're gonna speak, we are speaking about AI. They captured that domain. You are in the generation, you know. Today, with all the, the weapons of mass destruction. And all the countries. And when you see those weapons. You better ask your question, you better ask yourself the questions. Is the human brain that can create this? The answer is no. And all the movies. Fourth, that are, that are filling our TVs. All these movies, they just showing you. One day, how they will destroy the apocalypse. The destruction of the, of White House. And all this, they are just preparing your mind. We are here to destroy human life. How people can be dreaming on how they will destroy their own countries? And with the weapons of mass destruction. Just from one button. Able to destroy the whole country. And that was the domain. That from the time of the Bible, they captured. Everything humans are using against humans. They fabricate them. They sell them to you. And they put us against each others. And we're using those weapons and we destroying lives. You know, in the time of Corona, they were even showing to us. How, why? And they really wanted to reduce the numbers of humans. And they were saying, Africa have got more people. And when we read in the Bible, they say, in the time of Noah, men multiplied. Same things of multiplication. And today is one of the concern of some of the people. No, humans are a lot. No humans are a lot. We have to do something. We have to do something. Humans are a lot on this planet. You are a human. Who makes you, who gives you the power? To things that we are a lot. And if you want to do, to reduce the numbers. Start by killing yourself. And kill your family. So that the number will be reduced. Why you start thinking that the other have to die? Because they are not humans. We are the enemies. What is now the dream of AI? Is to build a system. These are not my words. I came from the Bible. Now I'm taking you to the science. I show you in a different stage of the Bible. How they change the Nephilim intervene on the life of a human. And against the life of a human. Now let's go to the science itself. And these are not my words. You are in the generation, you can Google. And double check, triple check everything I would say to you. The what I share on the Bible, you say, oh, you is a pastor, you know? And these are the people who believe in rapture, you know, is a pastor. Now let's go to the signs. Where you can double check and triple check what I'm telling you now. The dream of AI. Is to build a system that will surpass the human intelligence. That's the dream. If you want to build a dream that will surpass the human intelligence. My first question, who are you? If I want to build a system that will surpass you. It's mean I'm not you. Because I cannot build a dream that will surpass myself. And that's the dream. And you're gonna see. And there are two categories of AI that I need to explain. Otherwise you will be afraid of every time you hear word AI. The first one is what is called narrow AI. Narrow AI, it's aim to enhance or facilitate human life. And this is the way to approach humans. To become friendly with AI. That is why they make cell phone to us. It makes our life easy. I part I'm using, it makes our life easy. When they said to enhance to facilitate a human life. That's why I can use a microwave to cook fasts. That's why I can use this microphone. That is what they, now when they say they, it's a narrow. It's the purpose to facilitate human life. We are using that. And the world, it becomes so connected. But when the time will come. When they gonna make boom. Yesterday, they showed me the movie. Where they stopped the internet just for how many minutes? Just for few minutes. And the planet was in disaster. Have you ever imagined? The day the internet will be stopped. For one day. On this planet. Have you ever imagined that? Bank close, TV close. Aeroplane will never fly. Because nothing of those inventions can operate without it. And these are the things owned by a certain people. Not by governments. Not by governments. By people. It's helping us. But one day. When it will be late. I will not enter there. Because that will lead me to six, six, six. And they will say, ah, this is a pastor again. But the aim of today is to prepare you. Because you are already in the generation. That you will never live without AI. We are using that. That's the narrow AI. But the second category. Is what is called. A A G J I. Which they call artificial general intelligence. These are the names. And this one now. Is the one that's aim. To build a system to surpass human intelligence. Now, on these two categories. It's a type of a science. That will make humans jobless. Job less. Let me tell you where I'm taking you. There are already useless domains to study in university. I say useless. When you study that, you finish, you're gonna only have certificates. Diploma and degree, but on the real life, jobless. Because of the second category of AI. And some of you are busy studying for you to become a future jobless. And now this type of expose. Will help you to make a decision. To make a decision. And they know. Listen what I, I discover. They projected a year twenty thirty. Twenty thirty. Where human rights will reach ninety percent of jobless. It's not a prophecy. It's a plan predicted by a A J I. Listen, I say ninety. South Africans, one of the countries. That are really jumping himself in AI. Just in January. Standard Bank. Signed eight thousand. Eight thousand. Not lower workers. C'est que nous appelons les cadres en français. Un chômage. Things I'm telling you are not the dreams. Are already happening. Today, if you go to the bank. Banks become like a funeral palou. It's so white. Bank were not like this when we came in these countries. It was like a home affairs. Paper sign here. Today, from my cellphone. With the super intelligent development. I can manage my bank account and my money. And you are the witness of that. Do you know what is happening? Every time you manage your bank yourself. It's mean all the people that were working in the bank became jobless. And ces gens étaient des cadres. Encadré des banques à la société. Ne sont pas des petits peuples. Ah ah, sont pas des petits peuples. Chaumers. Now what will happen? Stress. After what will happen? Heart attack. They are dead. Used with money. Banks facilities. Suddenly, the bank. Embrace the AI. And they don't need any more humans. And all those women become jobless. And this is just the beginning. That is why as a father. God laid that burden unto me. I'm not only talking to you, I will show you some of the escape ways. How you need to prepare yourselves. Because in all those generations that these things happened. There were people who find faith. Now if you don't know about how to find the save. You will be a victim. Imagine you're studying right now. Let's say you're studying social workers. You are in the university studying social workers. I'm telling you just now resign. Don't even wait tomorrow. Just now resign. Most of you are working as in call centers. Do you know that call centers? Send thousands of secretaries out of job. There are companies who don't need all these administrative people. They just, they just sign a contract with the. The company of. Call centers. And they managing all the calls. They answering all your problems. And they making millions of money. And why it will increase? Because to those people who are making money, those investors. When I spend my money with A G I. The highest intelligence artificial. When I invest my money there. I don't need more people. And I have no pension to pay for you. And the machine don't need medical aid. They don't need holidays. They don't need a time of work. They can be working. And today, even in the industries. Where the manufacturer cars. And all the stuff. They don't need anymore. Humans. They can be working, robots can be working twenty four hours. No medical aids. No pension funds. No life cover. No holiday funds. And they making those people rich. And humans poor. And consequently. You may now start looking the ways. To make life. And the devil is showing them the way of crime. The devil is showing them the way of prostitution. And all those ways know that I will kill you. I will kill you for time with time. And this is happening under our nose. And we shouting Hallelujah. And we praying. We praising God. But things are happening. Our father starts falling already. With the pressure. And ourselves with ignorance. You can go, I will go to the university. And I will be a social worker. Ask yourself. How many social worker finding jobs? You may be laughing now. But these things are serious. This is a flood that is shaking the humanity. Unless you are not a human. But if you are one. Of us. That's why I say. The rise, youth and rise of AI. A big warning. I'm just like a person standing on the road and telling you. Guys, guys. Don't take this direction. This is the way, please. There is no future here. Because there is a mighty army, well organized, rich, famous, well known. Are against us. It's not about governments. Some of them are innocent. Some of them, they even ignore, they don't know. People are just behind the money. But it's more than money. Let's say the positive side of AI. It makes life better. And the first quality of life. That the first one, the narrow, that are called narrow. And they create a medical, a lot of medical innovations. AI, it creates a lot of medical innovation. Today, it's so easy. To treat human life. And that are positive. And they facilitate our life, we can be living, we've got all the things like. You can be cooking in fast me, in five minutes, you can be making your rice, you can be. And all these appeals are assisting us. But what are the negative side of AI? Number one, the loss of job. Number one. The loss of job. the loss of job. I was even watching. Because when I was preparing eh, this expose, as a doctor, I have to listen to most of the best speaker on AI. And this is, this is what I will advise you. One of them say, we create something that we cannot control. And they ask him a question. Can you stop it? And they say it's too late. It's too late. Everyone need to position himself. Because they saying now, right now, they're using an AI which need to be controlled by a human. But they already reached a point with the robot that don't need a human. And those robots, they are afraid that can even disobey to those who create them. That's why they already making a movie that they create monster that they cannot control. And when they go out of the society, they start destroying. Listen to me. Hollywood is a prophetical land for the announcements of the inventions. Before them to release things, they send it to the movie fest. Everything they're showing in the movie, I'm the one who call it prophetical, eh? This means they announce to you what will be happening. We were small when they were showing us the movie of that guy, which my generation here, that guy. Jean Louis Renat, my guy, and those people who can, they were controlling things with their watches. They showed them like a movies. Today is no longer a movie. You have got a watch that can control your heartbeat, that can control your sugar, that can control the weather, that can show you everything just in the watch. But they already announce us on the movie. Everything they are announcing in the movies, they're telling you where they are going. Number one negative things, I said loss of job. And number two, the manufacturing of the weapons of war. Today, we, we are witnessing. They can create a throne that can travel the countries without any human and kill someone. And they take the picture and the videos and they're showing to us. And we are clapping when you are on the side of the winners. That's why you are clapping. By the day they're gonna use it on against you, you're gonna be crying. What intelligence? Today is no longer the country where America controls everything. Their country will tell you, we have got Satan 2. Listen the name. Satan 2. Et ils vous disent dans quelques secondes ça peut faire trembler toute la ville comme dirba. And they say to you, if you play just by the press of the button, we release Satan 2. And this are the creation of the artificial intelligence on the higher level. And now, everyone want to show that it's powerful. They are investing millions. Millions of money to make sure that everyone have got a weapon. Ils appellent cela les armes de dissuasion. Dissuasion. C'est-à-dire quand vous savez que je n'ai, ne jouez pas avec moi. And everyone is behind that. And when you read that weapon, capable to destroy human. Every time you hear, read about war, you need to know there is a human life who is stopped. Whatever side you may be politically, the end of the story, humans are wiped out of the planet. Ten millions of dead. Five millions of dead. Not chicken, not cockroaches. Human life. And every time you think human life, equal human destinies. Wiped out of the planet. Another negative side of the AI. It's what is called the surveillance of society. La surveillance de la société. Que personne ne vous trompe. Tu vois dans ton cellulaire tel que tu es là. On connaît partout où tu es. Today, they arrest some of the people when they're looking for you. They would just wait the place that you swap your bank card. When you swap your bank card, they know that you are in Egypt. C'est la partie de la surveillance. Et cette partie, mes amis, listen to me before I go on the recommendation. Don't miss the rapture. Please, I beg you. Don't miss the rapture. If you are playing with the church, I beg you, young god. The devil is lying to you that you are so smart. You are very intelligent generation. You don't need your parents, you don't need whatever. Ah ah, they are taking you step by step too. C'est à la bateau qu'on est en train de vous amener. Don't read, don't miss the rapture. I beg you. Because this element of the surveillance of society, it will be highly enforced after the arc of Noah will go up. The image of the rapture. The wicked man will arise. He will control. That's why the Bible say you will not be able to buy or to sell. You know before it was so difficult to understand that. But in today's society, all of us as we are here, all of us as we are here, the only problem is because they're not looking for you. They dare, you're gonna be in the, on the book so that they can look for you. They're gonna catch you easily like a cockroach. Through your bank card, your cellphone, everything, every form of device that we're using. But this part, God didn't allow it to be enforced before the rapture. Why? Because the Holy Spirit is still on the planet. Is the presence of the Holy Spirit. But what is the rapture? Is the Holy Spirit taking the church, the bride of Jesus, and taking him up for the wedding. And now, when the rapture will take place, the planet will be without the Holy Spirit. Now, the wicked man will use the surveillance to make the life of people hard. That's why I beg you. It's not a religious message. Today, it's become a fact, a proof. I beg you. Young people, those who are listening to me via any platform, I beg you, don't miss the rapture. What are the bad side of AI? Negative side? Modification of human. Today, even some of the Christians are going to do the BBL. I don't want to be like this. And you go and they change you completely just because of beauty. So that you can become a influencer. And later on die young. I say later on die young. Because they modify your sense of human. People are dying, people are crying. The masses are going because no one blow the trumpets. We love it. You don't need to know if you are boy or if you are a girl. You don't need to know. Put the children together. Themselves they know. Themselves they know. Put the children of one year together. You see girls, they know that they're girls. Boys, they know that they're boys. You don't need to be told. It's natural. And another negative side of AI is the modification of the seeds. You know there are other oranges in Congo. I open the orange, small orange and I start counting the seeds. Twenty-four seed, natural seeds in small orange, twenty-four. And when you eat it, you realize that no, I'm eating, I'm taking a orange. Some of the oranges you drink, you're eating here, they are seedless. Why? Because they modify them. And you can only plant that those seed once. I'm telling, I'm telling you facts, not stories. You can Google and check. You plant it once and the seed that will by mistake come out of those, those fruits. If, if you plant them, it will not, it will not grow. Why? Do you know that your life, your health, God put it in the food? The Bible say you will serve the Lord, he will bless your bread and he will bless your water and he will take away sicknesses from you. Why we are apparently a highly technologically generation? But we are a very sick generation. Because the food we eating are modified. That's why human, the target is always human. Now, when you're eating this stuff of stuff, you will never be healthy. And they know. I read a lot. Most of the people who are selling the stuff to us, they don't eat the things that they sell to us. They eat the things that we will call for the poor. And they sell us the things that we see likes for the rich. When your table is full of meats, the meats that are modified, juice modified. But them, a corn in a simandak, a corn in a dengyang zombie alambi and eat with his children. Because he knows what I eat will support my health. And these are the technologies. They create this type of technologies. And if also you are not aware, you always think that the way you eating here because you become somebody and your stomachs becoming big. And you are not aware that the stomach big, big stomach is the beginning of the sicknesses. And you're telling your friend, you see. You see, I'm becoming somebody. Twenty years later, sickness after sickness. Everything you're gonna learn about this subject. Keep in your mind, the targets is human. Who told them that the food will disappear? Who told them? So that they can try to fabricate the seeds. Listen, they are fabricating seeds. Listen, they are fabricating seeds. Some of the food that we eating are look alike. Let now go back to the church. Before I make some recommendation. Do you know why? Papa Raso. Everyone is talking about Africa. Africa the last ground. Africa the future. Because this is the so-called forgotten continent. Which naturally by God grace. Is not fully affected. Not fully affected. This mean you. You can learn like some of the Japanese today. In your apartment. You start making your own agriculture stuff. Make sure that they grow naturally. So that you can only be eating bio. Otherwise. You're gonna make the hospital rich. And you're gonna live a short life. Because the targets. Is to surpass. Human intelligence. Don't miss the rapture. Now. What to do pastor? What's to do? We surround by this. Listen to this recommendation. Number one. For you to make it because. The target number one as we say jobless. Now we are young person, you have to work. You have to make money, you have to make some means. Listen. Those who gonna survive. Number one. Are those who gonna have excellent spirits. Listen to me. If I had more days. What I want to start now, I'll make it the second day. But I know. That you've got the spirit of God. What I would say in few words. You are smart enough to go and study. Those who have got excellent spirits. Are the people like Daniel. Daniel a man of excellent spirits. Living in the generation that was really destroyed. But because of an excellent spirits. No one could match. Daniel. This is not a generation to be lazy. This is not a generation to be mediocre. This is not a generation to be on the average. Listen to me. When you're gonna follow again the on YouTube, I know that they are recording. Start. Meditating from the point I'm telling you because this is now the recommendation. This is now the way out. How to be on the side of favor. Because when a narrow AI. And the second category enter in the on your domain. Those who are excellent. They cannot wipe them out. Say amen. Say my amen bien. Say my amen bien. Become excellent in your domain. Listen to me. AI exclude no domain. There are already churches. In some of the country. Where the pastor is a robot. And he preach the Bible. With perfection. A robot. He develop the teachings. When you hear Dr Benjamin, you say, no, no, no. Our pastor is nothing. And when you go to their counseling. They're already using what you call chat, chatbot, something like this. When you expose your problem, some of you are consulting. Over the phone, you ask, I have these issues. What you can answer to me? What you never asked in your mind. Who's that person's answering to you? It's an artificial intelligence. And sometimes. And what they notice in one country, I watched the. One of them, it was not a movie, it was a real story. Where now they were against this type of stuff. Because what they realize, most of the advice that they were giving them in the chats. It was always leading the young people to commit a suicide. They will start nicely, you become a friend, you asking the question. And now, and the things that they answering to you start creating some pressure in your mind. And most of the young people start committing a suicide. And I say in all this. Just keep in your mind. Human is the target. Start nice. End up by destroying. I want you to say. I will be excellent. I want you to stand up and say I will be excellent. I want you to stand up and say I will be excellent. Ah, ah, it looks like you don't believe in yourself. I will be excellent. That is the only way. You will be, you will be healthy, healthy. Do you know when the winds blow? The first victim. Are the leaves. The papers. Those who are not healthy. I want you to greet five people and say I will be excellent. I will distinguish myself. I will survive. Like Noah. Like David. Like Joshua. I will be excellent. You may find your, you may find your place please. That is the first things to do. Don't be lazy. Don't be lazy. Lazy will have no place. In your generation. Every lazy people they will wipe out. All the mediocre people will be wiped out. And for you to be excellent. Excellency require knowledge. You are not, you, you will never be excellent by wish. Every time you are exposed before an excellent person. Is a man who master knowledge. La Bible dit au temps de Daniel, au temps de la fin. Ceux qui auront de l'intelligence. Ils prieront comme de ce toit. Jeunes chrétiens. Ne soyez pas aveclés par les choses que vous avez vies. C'est manifesté avant vous. Là où vous allez. La médiocrité n'a pas de place. Si tu es dans un domaine. You must master knowledge in that domain. Parce que beaucoup ils vont chommer. On va enlever beaucoup de gens. N'avez-vous pas remarqué? Chaque fois que vous allez dans des banques aujourd'hui. Après être servi par un humain. On vous demande. You have to give a survey on the person. Avez-vous remarqué cela? Do you know why? Because banks don't want anymore anyone. They've got all the machine with AI. They only want the human. The excellent one. Chaque fois que on vous reçoit. La personne vous dit. Tu vas me. Tu vas, tu vas répondre aux questions. Si je vous ai bien reçu. And you can give me one out of ten and something like this. And the AI are recording. And every time they say Raso, oh, bad service, Raso eh, bad service, Raso eh, bad service, Raso eh, bad service. Tomorrow that report. The investor will call you and say, okay. Thank you for being a part of us. But I think next month the job is done. Be excellent. Learn. Because you are human. What I want to tell you this. AI. They've got the intelligence. But they don't have soul. You! You have got an intelligence. And you have got a soul. And if you learn. They will never surpass you. It's a dream that will not come to pass to you. Hallelujah! Why? They start fabricating by copying men. No photocopy can be better than the original. That's why you need to be an origin. Excellent one. And your boss. Every time want to send the people out of the job. He will say, everyone can go. But not you. Amen. Everyone can be chased. But not you. And what that will make you that favor? An excellent spirit. Don't be those young people. Who are spending hours. Now. Use it. To gain knowledge. In your domain. Every time they meet you. They must see that this person is going higher. That's what happened to Daniel. But if you be a young person. Just with junk stuff, junk things in your cellphone. iPad, TV. I'm telling you. You not stand the ground. Of your generation. Be excellent. And they don't become excellent by chance. It's intentional. It's a decision. I will be the best and the best pastor. I'll be a best and the best businessman. I'll be a best and the best wife. I'll be a best and the best agriculture. This the generation of the best. That will stand with that artificial intelligence. Say my amen. Say my amen bien. Number two. The supernatural favor. Super supernatural favor. I will not speak long there because this is what they telling at in the church. Every time our pastors are telling us about favor. In the time of Noah. Noah find favor. And that was a supernatural favor. In the time of David. In the time of Joshua. Joshua and Caleb say. If the Lord grant us favor. We gonna win them. Beloved. Si y a une génération. Qui ne va pas se jouer de l'église. Comme la génération, les générations qui vous ont précédées. C'est la vôtre. Écoutez, la génération qui sera enlevée. La Bible dit, Jésus viendra chercher une église glorieuse. Sans tâches, ni rites, ni choses semblables. C'est ça l'église qui sera cherchée. Et c'est votre génération. C'est ne pas une génération de scandales dans les églises. C'est ne pas une génération de médiocrité dans les églises. C'est ne pas une génération de péché dans les églises. You need the favor. More than the previous generation. Banga ba no, ça là va fentir. Mais il peut trouver le travail. Il peut aller travailler à la banque. Mais toi, si tu fais des aventures. Même si tu pars naturellement. There is no place. You need the favor of God. And then you have to be connected. Savez la favor, qu'est-ce que la favor fait? La favor trible. Hallelujah! Donc même là où y a les obstacles. Les gens savent déjà que tu ne peux pas passer. Mais la favor va tribler les événements, tu te retrouves là-bas. This is your generation. You have to dream. You have to pray. You have to imagine. Your life cover by a supernatural favor. Y avait la méchanceté. Y avait le dégât. Mais Noah et sa famille étaient protégés. By supernatural favor. Jusqu'au temps de l'enlèvement. Church. Si tu venais, tu dis, je suis jeune. Ces choses-là de Dieu, c'est pour les vieilles personnes. Listen. Wanting or not. J'ai commencé à servir Dieu, j'avais dix-neuf ans. Converti à l'âge de dix-sept ans. Dans sept mois ici, j'aurai soixante ans. Wanting or not, we going. You gonna take over the church of God. In your generation. And if we need favor. I'm telling you. You! You need more, more favor. And don't play with that. Number three. Let jump. Because the two, these two. It's enough for you already to start operating in that. For me to save time. Let me give you some recommendation now. Don't go to the university to study anything. There are some of the domain you have to avoid. Because they are already, they are already paralyzed by the AI. Paralyzed. Paralyzed. And the, the authorities, they know. Now they just don't know how to rethink the education. And some of the well-advanced countries, they already rethinking the education. I will go straight on what you need to consider to study. Study anything linked with science. You will find a job in this time. Anything linked with science. Do you know that war that is happening? Où les gens sont en train de se battre pour avoir des minéraux? On les appelle des minéraux. This is one of the fight in your countries. In most of the countries in Africa. Because we have got those minerals. Parce que ils savent que the future will be based on AI. Which mean science. And those of you right now will be learning in all things linked in science. This will be the less affected area for the job. Anything learning in engineering. Engineering. Because this parts will be connected with the inventions. Étudier ce genre de domain. La cyber sécurité. Ce sont des domaines qu'il faut étudier. Parce que là, c'est l'informatique. Se connecter avec l'intelligence. Elda, creative industries. Étudier dans ce genre de domaines. Health care innovations. Y a déjà un hôpital qui existe pendant que je parle, en Chine où il y a tout is run by robots. Alors quand je parle de health, il faut aller vers le développement de la santé. Aucun domaine n'est épargné. Même certains docteurs seront de chômeurs. Parce que, est-ce que vous savez? Vous savez aujourd'hui, être soigné par un docteur robot, c'est tous ces examens, c'est la perfection. Tu dis, j'ai mal à la tête, j'ai sens ceci, j'ai sens cela. Les robots a été déjà enregistrés. Comme le médecin calcule pour savoir que le problème peut être ici. Dès que lui, il dit tant, 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 il te donne déjà. Abicoulio. Y a aujourd'hui des appareils, ça se trouve ici même quelque part. On te met à la main, on te met à la main ici. Ça te fait sortir les résultats de ta santé. Dans tous les domaines, il faut pas dire, nous nous sommes épargnés. Soyez excellent. Je vais parler dans beaucoup de domaines. Je vous donne les devoirs. Go and Google. What a type of jobs? Just as I say, what a type of jobs that will be easily affected with the rise of AI. You gonna have all the answers. And then you gonna say to yourself, which are the domain I have to avoid? To waste my years in university. And you decide with God. You ask the favor of God. And then you make a decision to be excellent. Let put our hand together for Jesus. Vous êtes bénis mes amis. Parce que vous avez appris ces choses. Vous êtes bénis. It's just a warning to help you to know how to position yourself in this generation. May God of heaven, may God before whom I stand, may God who fight for me since I was a young man. May this God fight for you just like Joshua, just like Calais, just like David, just like Noah. This is how your life will be. And this in the name of Jesus. May God bless you, thank you. Thank you.
Amen, amen. Can we clap for the man of God once again? Can we all stand and honor the anointing of the man of God? Just for 30 seconds, I want you to clap and appreciate the moment I personally has been blessed. Thank you so much Daddy. I know the next step, normally we are supposed to ask question. But due to the time, we're not gonna have much time to do it. So, I'm Elder Michelange, the elder in charge of the youth. If you have any question based on what Daddy has been sharing or if you have any question concerning AI that you have, please feel free to send it to us. We gonna have other program maybe with that even later on. It can even be on YouTube. I know that it's gonna be in Rwanda, but it's gonna be more than willing to answer to all your question. We do not fight for that. But please feel free to send us all the question that you have based on what Daddy has shared and based on whatever that you have to ask concerning AI. Okay? Because the time has already gone. But once again, thank you so much Daddy. Can you clap once again for the man of God? Thank you so much. You may be seated just for 10 minutes. They're gonna give us some cold drinks, some muffins. I know some of us, we came straight from work. So, we really appreciate your time. And I wanna do something which is gonna be a bit different while they're serving us cold drinks and muffins and something just to eat quickly.